All right, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, October 10th. This is our study session. So I will have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Batuja Indapure.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
All are present. Back to Mayor Clark.
Great, thank you so much. So first up, we have Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember O'Farrell, will you lead us, please? Great, thank you. I will do the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. All right, I will undertake a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and no executive session, right? Sweet. Okay, so first is a proclamation for Substance Abuse Prevention Month. Would anyone like to volunteer?
National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas October is a time to highlight substance abuse prevention in both individual and community health by remembering those who have lost their lives to substance abuse and to acknowledge these, those in recovery, as well as those who support them. And whereas millions of Americans suffer from substance abuse, which includes underage drinking, alcohol dependency, non-medical use of prescription drugs, abuse of over-the-counter medications, and illicit drug use. And whereas substance use prevention has a greater impact than later intervention, by changing an individual's early life path away from maladaptive solutions and toward positive behaviors and productivity. And whereas the impacts of increasing protective factors while reducing risk factors and engaging social-emotional learning provide a universal benefit to all who suffer from substance abuse. And whereas by stopping the drug use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction and create stronger neighborhoods in our community. Now and therefore, Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Samamish and calls upon residents to join her in engaging in appropriate programs and activities to promote comprehensive substance abuse prevention efforts in our community.
Great, thank you. All right, and then our first presentation this evening is a Police Department update with Chief and Sergeant Elias. Are you just here for support? Yeah.
Mayor Clark, Deputy Mayor Lamb, council. Before I begin my presentation, I wondered if you'd humor me. I would like to present an award. It is long overdue. Sergeant Christine Elias, would you please join me up here?
I had to turn my mic on to clap already.
I would like to read for you an excerpt from a nomination I wrote to the King County Sheriff's Office. It's not too long, but it is an excerpt, I assure you. Detective Sergeant Christine Elias has served with the Samamish, or has served Samamish with honor for more than six years. During that time, she has become woven into the very fabric of the Samamish City Government, and she is an instrumental facilitator in maintaining the health of her contract and partnership. Sergeant Elias' tenure in Samamish has been marked by continuous community outreach, collaboration with stakeholders, both city and department-wide, and service as the public-facing voice of the Samamish Police Department. She is the city's media resource officer, the SRO coordinator, and fleet coordinator. Further, she serves on the Board of Public Safety for both public school districts that serve Samamish. She remains the detective sergeant for the entirety of Precinct 2, and she coordinates the robust and growing Explorer program. Upon promotion of Dan Pringery to major in late spring of 2022, Sergeant Elias fulfilled the roles of both acting captain and acting chief for several months until successor could be appointed. She was pivotal in elevating morale and providing stability during a period of organizational stress. She exhibited extraordinary care in maintaining a healthy working relationship between the police department and city staff, and she consistently demonstrated our organizational goals and values while simultaneously managing her normal, yet substantial duties. It is my distinct honor to award Detective Sergeant Christine Elias the Medal of Meritorious Service in gratitude for her courageous leadership and unwavering commitment to the community of Samamish. I assure you that the Sheriff's Office only gives out a couple of these a year. They are hard to come by, and this is so well-deserved, and it is, again, overdue. So Detective Sergeant Elias, here is your paper award, but here is for her formal dress uniform, her lapel pin.
We're doing a quick photo op. Thank you for presenting that, and thank you, Sergeant Elias.
Thank you. And with that, I will begin my regularly scheduled programmed presentation. Next slide, please. I'd like to share with you kind of what your Samamish Police Department has been up to since we last spoke. I think it's been about five months. So here's kind of a brief overview. I'm going to begin with CEO Detective Nate Grier. I couldn't be more pleased with how this position is turning out. I'm providing you here stats for his second quarter. The first quarter, we're still trying to figure out kind of what data to collect, how to present it, what that data means, and where we can grow from. But I'm comfortable with the second quarter stats, and we even have an idea of what to do for the third quarter that's going to be a little bit different. But I'd like to kind of explain what you're looking at here and what it means to us. So again, data for the CEO from July 1st to September 30th. I'd like to reiterate, I've said it before, but the mission of the CEO is to provide quality professional law enforcement services tailored to individuals in individual communities, right, to improve public safety and trust. So following the Trossacks burglaries of the spring, we really wanted to kind of dial in that level of engagement with some of the HOAs that were reaching out and crying for help and saying, you know, what do we do? What do we do as a community? What can you do for us? So that was where we focused our energies kind of right out of the gate. And Nate did an exceptional job. He met with, and this was, again, he met with some of the Trossacks ones in the first quarter, but in the second one, he conducted a HOA community meeting with Boulder Creek Apartments and Townhomes, Sierra, I'm sorry, Sienna Lane HOA, and an unnamed HOA at Southeast 31st Place and 224th Avenue Southeast. And the purpose of that was not just, I've mentioned SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. The purpose is to get our CEO out in the community, looking people in the eye, shaking hands, looking at their homes, talking about what we can do with your curtilage, where can we put cameras, what can we do to better empower you to maintain a sense of safety, and where can we make improvements? Nate conducted at least three of those meetings, each time meeting between 20 and 30 community members, and really trying to drive the point home is what does it mean to be a good neighbor? And if you see something out of the ordinary, you need to say something. And now we hope that by meeting Nate, shaking his hand, they know that they can call on him or us, and they know the kind of response they're going to get, and they, even if not in that moment, down the road, they feel that they need and have some questions that they would like answered, they have a point of contact, someone they know, someone they've met, and someone that they trust. So for me, that's really where this whole CEO position was designed to start and grow from, and I believe we're seeing those results. From there, he's conducted, what do we say there, five individual community member meetings. Those kind of evolved out of conversations either through emails or phone calls where certain community members aren't comfortable doing the public forum, and we want to have an avenue for them to sit down with us as well and have that one-on-one engagement. And some of them are kind of more sensitive issues that they could really appreciate Nate's perspective on, such as juvenile issues, juvenile drug issues. What else did he say? That what they have concerns about crime trends, what are the police doing about it? You know, is what they're hearing through next door, is that accurate? Is it misinformation? You know, where is the truth in what they're hearing? So that's another component of the CEO is trying to just be available in whatever medium the community member desires, right? So if it's not a public forum, fine, we'll find another way. 92 emails, and I don't mean to minimize what that actually is. These 92 emails are not simply that. A lot of them are people expressing their concerns, asking for engagement, setting up meetings for personal engagement, curious about ordinances, curious about resources. What can I do when I have a concern about traffic safety, which is a huge thing that we deal with here in the, in Samamish? So these 92 emails frequently are followed up by phone calls. So there's an extreme level of engagement, and I think it's even more remarkable that Nate has been able to cultivate kind of this body of work despite the fact that, I know you've all met him, he's the Marine unit, his call-out volume is pretty high during the summer, he's also now a drone operator, he's a trainer of all the stuff and things you can think of. He is a subject matter expert for the King County Sheriff's Office in just about everything that we do. And despite that, despite those responsibilities, he's really, really delivering what I've asked, what I've asked of him, and it's just incredibly impressive. Two precinct tours. We're happy to give precinct tours anytime we want. It's about that transparency, that open communication, people want to see behind the scenes, and we're happy to show them. The two that reached out this time were groups of youths that primarily wanted to see the police car and turn on the lights, and that's fine, but we'd also like, if anyone else is curious, swing by, meet the chief, meet the detective sergeant, walk around the office, meet some detectives, ask them, ask some questions, we're always open for that. He attended, or he gave three presentations to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, one on water safety, one on bike safety, one tailored to medical response, and another one about drug awareness and internet safety. Let's see, 11 community presentations and training events, National Night Out. He attended Klahani Days and participated in the parade and the subsequent event, the meet and greet. He's provided CRACE training. I don't know if I've ever explained what CRACE is, that's civilian response to active shooter events. He has provided that to Good Samaritan preschool staff, the Samamish MOC staff. I'm going to come back to our Community Academy here in a minute. One Pill Can Kill, I don't know if you saw that on our website or not, but that's hosted by the Isquaw School District in collaboration with the Drug Enforcement Agency. It's a collaboration, again, between the federal authorities and local law enforcement, and it's even more poignant in Samamish, where we have lost lives to fentanyl. So this was a good community event, we'd like to see it again. Great participation. Detective Grier has hosted several Stop the Bleed trainings, one for Good Samaritan church staff, which involves applying tourniquets, wound packing, chest seals. It's basically anything that you can do to buy time until you can get the medical professionals on scene. So he's, he's got actually several more of those scheduled. He's provided training to Cascade Ridge School on traffic safety and school safety. He was a participant in the Samamish Block Party. For Eastside Catholic, he's doing a security planning and reunification meeting, which I wasn't even sure what that was until he explained it to me. But the purpose is reunifying kids with parents in a quick fashion while keeping their whereabouts accounted for in the event that you have a significant event at a school or even a false alarm, but really that accountability piece. Let's see, and I'd like to also highlight our ongoing outreach efforts with the Police Explorers. It's still a bi-weekly program, I think they meet every other Thursday, and we have, I think, 11 explorers right now, two academies per year, but it's just another way that Samamish Police Department engages with the youth in the community for outreach. What am I at next? Next slide, please. What we have in progress for you, the Community Police Academy is, it just started in September, it'll run, it's 10 weeks. I have a slide dedicated to it down the road. We're currently working on a safety winter conditions resource fair. It's contingent upon CWU's availability, but we're already in contact with EFER about putting this thing together, so that's coming right along. We have our first meeting for the WPGA championship planning next week. The PGA has been in contact with us, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but we also have a binder about YAY FIC from 2016 that we can rely upon. Almost none of our staff here participated in that 2016 event, but we do have, looks like a wealth of knowledge to lean upon, so we're moving on that right now. I've already touched on CRACE. I have in my mind, and I've already talked to the school district about this, but I would like to put on an active shooter training for the police department. I did this in Shoreline many, many years ago. It would be probably during the summer in collaboration with EFER and the school district, where we would have actors and mock scenes, but it would basically be a live-action scenario where police would not know what they're responding to, and it would be in play, but some sort of thing where we are forced to work together and iron out all of our communications to effectively manage a critical incident scene. And the school board thus far has been on board with trying to put something like this together, so that's, that's what I'm focused on, and Nate will be crucial in helping put that together. He's looking for any outreach he can with private schools to, again, put on Stop the Bleed or CRACE training, and we are currently putting together a security resource pamphlet that you'll find online. It's supposed to be in the neighborhood of about 60 pages, but when one of your constituents says, like, I'm curious about how I could, you know, better improve my door or windows or what other resources does the police department have, well, this should be readily available on our website for anyone to peruse with just lots of general home security tips. So be looking for that. Oh, and Stop the Bleed, I mean, I don't think he's done it yet, but he'll have Stop the Bleed training here for city staff shortly. Next slide, please. At long last, the data dashboard. It exists. The data is real-time, but it comes with some limitations. I've already heard from some people that said, and they found it before we officially launched it, and we kind of did a soft launch on it to see what would happen, and they're like, you know, I don't see my stuff on there. And they're not going to necessarily. Here's why. We have a dashboard just for the Samamish Police Department on our website, and we have one for the Greater King County Sheriff's Office. All of the data that you'll find in there is limited, so you're not going to find anything on there that has, I'll say, significance, so a major event, a major assault, anything that is currently an active, open investigation will not be on there. What you will see, for instance, if you type in burglaries for this quarter, you'll see three. The reason you see three is because those three were cleared by arrest. So the case has come to conclusion, we're now comfortable putting that knowledge out there. But when people find this dashboard, and we will advertise it better, I think. Some of the limitations, though, it's not, it's not the straight raw data that I would like to provide, and frankly, I can't provide if it's an ongoing investigation. So you will see on there in real time, if a deputy comes out and takes a vandalism to your car, somebody egged it, they will write the case report, if they are no suspects, they will close the case within 24 hours, it will be on there with your case number and a generic block number. It's not going to say your address, but you know, relatively, you know, your cross streets. So I encourage you to take a look at it. If you have any feedback, please let me know. This is a King County Sheriff's Office dashboard. They customize one section of it at our request to us. If we can customize it greater, I don't know. But please take a look, and I'd love to hear your thoughts. Hybrid police vehicles. We just got our first one in the fleet two weeks ago. We're, we're very excited. This is consistent with Samamish Climate Action Plan. You can see here the benefits, reduced maintenance and operations costs, fuel consumption, emissions, associated environmental damage. This was our first. We anticipate having probably five or six more as they roll over within the next year plus, so that should be a good quarter of our fleet as we move forward, but most all will be replaced through normal attrition. Speaking of police cars, next slide. This has been our signage for approaching 15 years. There's nothing wrong with it, but we thought it was time for a refresh in keeping with kind of our newer patches. So we have a graphic designer in the family here at Samamish PD, and this is what we came up with, we're really pleased. Next slide, please. You'll first see it on our motorcycles. The motorcycle, I think, we already have it built out, we're just waiting on the stickers and decals. I like the cleaner, the cleaner writing. Again, very consistent with the font on our patches. I like to call your attention to the silhouette in the back, again, part of our patch. We hope that you will see that on our police cars as well. It's a custom decal from 3M, and we're just wanting to ensure that the visibility is what we want and that the durability is there before we start putting it on our, on our police cars. Next slide, please. So you probably can't see it there, but the entire back window is that mountainscape. So we're hopeful. The mockups we've seen look incredible, and so with our new hybrids coming out, again, through normal attrition, these new decals come at no cost, extra cost to the city Samamish, this will just be our new, our new graphics. So. Our first Community Academy, again, it's ongoing right now. It started mid-September, will run through mid-November. It is a partnership with Woodinville PD and KCSO. We put out on our media, as did Woodinville, as did KCSO, that we had 30, we had 30 seats available, and we had, we had more than 30 responses we were able to lock in, and 30 commitments, although 28 ultimately were only able to attend, but I'm pleased to say that 18 were Samamish. So really great turnout from our community. And I say that we hope this is the first of many because, next slide, please. I really feel like this is where we, we're going to connect with the community. There's a lot of uncertainty about what it is that we do, and we really want to, we really want to have that open two-way dialogue with our community members and say, you know, what do you think about policing today? What concerns do you have about policing today? What can we do better? What can we answer for you? It actually started out, right out of the gate, one of the first questions I heard was, I don't understand contracting. Why do you say Samamish Police and you're King County Sheriff's deputies? That was a really good place to start, because frankly, it's still at times confusing, but what that opened the door for us to do was explain, look at all these benefits that you get from the King County Sheriff's Office by contracting with them. And so each of our blocks of instruction, and I'll go through these very briefly to explain what they were, but we're designed to see that the vast majority of these things are not offered strictly by the Samamish Police Department. These are additional assets that are available for us to call upon whenever we need. So major crimes. We had a major crimes detective come out and really talk about what it is to be, you know, involved in some of these major investigations, and what it is to work with a prosecutor, and what it is to take a case before a judge and to prepare a case, challenges in preparing a case, DNA, reluctant witnesses, things of that nature. And this was a big ask, and I'm so pleased that it happened, but we actually called one of our Green River detectives out of retirement, former chief of Woodinville, Katie Larson, and came, the goodness of her heart, and gave us two hours to actually talk about the Gary Ridgeway investigation. I don't think that's going to happen again. Green River people are long since retired, but she did us a favor and came out, and it was well-received. The Special Assault Unit, that's going to be your elder crimes, sex assaults, things of that nature, investigations of a more serious nature. We had a single block on that. MAR, Major Accident Response and Reconstruction, that's the team that comes out when there is a significant collision that involves, that involves serious bodily injury or death. And that's a, it's not quite what most people think. I mean, they come out, now they use drones, they use lasers, I mean, it's very precise what it is they offer, and it's really great to see in action, that what happens and how we, how we, the care we take with a significant collision. Canine, most people don't understand how canines operate, and I didn't, until I quarried for them and I got chased around in the middle of the night by a dog. It is a tremendous asset when we live in the world of frequent burglaries, right? Like, what can, what can we do with the limitations of the law? What can we do when we're not allowed to pursue burglars? But we have someone that just broke in your house and ran out the back door. What can we do? One of the many things we can do, in addition to air support, is bring in a dog. And so these canines come out and show kind of how that science works and how they engage and what their limitations are. DUI, have a DUI instructor come and talk about what impairment looks like and what the laws are on the books, again, what limitations we have with DUI, also something that we can currently pursue for. So goes a little bit in the realm of, you know, what can police pursue and what they cannot pursue, but DUI is one of them. The Marine Unit, you've, several of you have been out with the Marine Unit. This is a huge resource we have here in Samamish, not only because they're, we have a dedicated boat, and we have dedicated officers, which is not something you see anywhere else in the county, but we do have a robust Marine Unit here for the Sheriff's Office, so it's great to have a nexus to Samamish, and so we could show that off. There was a block of instruction on patrol ops, just what it is day in, day out to be a police officer. Search and Rescue. We have a very, very large search and rescue program through the county, a lot of volunteers, I'd be guessing, but I wanted to say it was over 10,000 volunteers last time I heard. I participated in some of those, but it's not just going in the mountains looking for people that are lost, but they go out and they look for individuals that have walked away from elder care facilities. And I mean, really, there, if someone's, if someone's missing and you need to find them and you haven't seen it for a while, SAR is going to be taking that call and seeing what resources they can bring to bear for you. EVAC, we're going to be taking the class out to the track, let them see what it is to run code in, well, now wet conditions, I assume, and see really what laws are involved with engaging in a pursuit, how we conduct our business at high speeds, and some of the challenges that occur as a result. They're going to spend a few hours with the comm center, seeing exactly how a dispatcher works from the minute your call comes in, how it's triaged, and how it gets sent out to the police, and kind of, again, how else they would work with EFER, any other resources they're, they're trying to coordinate with. So they get to see firsthand what it is to be in the comm center. They're going to get to hang out with the SWAT team and see what, see what that's about, special weapons and tactics, we call them Tac 30. But in just the last couple of years, we've integrated canine with our SWAT team, we've integrated the drones with our SWAT team, so it's a really technical position, and it's such a great asset for us to have here, and it, really, no additional expense, it's just part of contracting. Our Traffic Unit, we have a, one of the only traffic units in the Sheriff's Office here, C-TAC has one, there's a small one in, I think, Maple Valley, but we have the biggest traffic unit here in Samamish, which is a result of, we have school zones everywhere, and it is a huge concern. We, when it's with buses and with children, we want to make sure that traffic safety, education enforcement is one of our top priorities. So they get to kind of ask those questions and see, again, how we conduct our business. They get to spend a few hours with AFIS, which is, I'll forget the acronym, but it's fingerprinting. They get to see how we go ahead and collect some of that evidence. And our new drone program, it's relatively new to the Sheriff's Office, but I anticipate we actually have two here in Samamish now, both, one through the Marine Unit, one through one of our SWAT team members, but drones are becoming more cost-effective, they are a huge asset, not only for, say, chasing a burglar, but Marine rescue, so I'm really hoping to grow the drone program over the next couple of years as they become more cost-effective, and they are. And then a block of instruction in constitutional use of force, which is, this is one of the more dynamic parts of the Community Academy, I'm really pleased, it's, I think it's next week, but they're get-to-go, the class gets to go to Bothell and use their VR use-of-force simulator, which puts the community members through dynamic scenarios, like shoot, no shoot, really designed to elicit a physiological response, to see, a lot of things happen when you're under stress that most people don't anticipate, and so they get to experience that, shut the scenario down, they get to ask questions, and then they get to see, based upon their action, how would the Sheriff's Office respond, what investigation would follow? So I'm excited for them to do that. That's kind of, that's a first, I think, for any Community Academy that I've heard of, but again, it's a favor from Bothell PD. We're growing our website every day, we're always looking for something new to put out there. The Samamish Foundation was kind enough to honor a request and gave us a brand-new fancy camera, and so we're able to kind of put together some really cool high-res videos, and I'd like to demonstrate one of them for you before I talk a little bit more about
Hey, I'm Officer Jones with the Samamish Police Department. Today's topic is school bus safety. The kids are heading back to school, and the buses are hitting the road. Here's a few tips to keep them safe and you out of trouble. Here's a few tips to keep them safe and you out of trouble. Every day, millions of children rely on school buses to get them to and from school, and they're most at risk when approaching or leaving a school bus. Remember, children may run or dart into the road unexpectedly. The dark mornings, fog, and rain we often contend with makes it especially hard to see, so be sure to use extra caution around school bus stops. In Washington, drivers approaching a school bus with flashing red lights and a stop paddle must stop anytime they're traveling in the same direction as the bus. When approaching from the opposite direction, drivers should proceed carefully without stopping on roadways with at least three lanes, or if a physical barrier or intervening space exists between the lanes. On roads with only two lanes, all vehicles are required to stop. The penalty for failing to stop for a school bus is $425, and many of the buses are equipped with automated cameras to capture violators. Our kids are relying on you to slow down around school buses and stop when the red lights flash. They thank you, we thank you, and your wallet will thank you, too. See you next time.
That was Derek Jones, one of our motors guys. He has a tremendous voice for this, I think. But they did a really, really great job. We have three videos out now. We have 12 more videos they're working on, and it's not... When I say "traffic tip Tuesday," that's what we're calling it. It won't be every Tuesday. We want to stagger them with some other communications. But... And it won't only be limited to traffic. We're going to be putting together videos for home security safety. And again, if you or your constituents have any ideas of a video you would like to see, just let me know, and we'll craft something up for it. But this is kind of our starting point with trying to really build out our website with resources that you can point your constituents to. A new officer onboarding program. You may have seen some of this on our media. Ryan has been fantastic with helping us put this together. I really want to create a culture here at the Sammamish Police Department where when we bring a new officer in, that they're fully integrated into what we're trying to do here, that they have complete buy-in with our mission, our goals, and our values. And so how I see... How I'm trying to accomplish this is by really giving them a formal welcome, starting with media, if they're up for it. So this is Mac, Max Alateral from Toquilla PD. He worked 22 years there. He's very, very excited to be in Sammamish. We're super pleased to have him. He's a very skilled officer, and he was kind enough to let me put something together for him and officially welcome him on our website to our PD. My goal is to do this for every single person coming to and sending a farewell to every person that moves on. So we have a couple of officers that have moved on to other opportunities. They've been very patient. Some to promotion, that's going to occur, and I would like to formally thank them for their service to Sammamish as they leave. So you can anticipate seeing that, too. But the other component to this new officer onboarding program, we should probably see in the spring, is I would like to have every single officer, and this is done nowhere else in the county. This was done in the Sheriff's Office when I was new 22 years ago. This isn't done anywhere anymore, and I would like to bring it back, but I would like all of our new officers to spend a few days, not on patrol, like a day with the CEO, out in the community, seeing what the CEO is doing. I want them doing a day with Matt at the schools, Matt Martin, sorry, seeing what a school resource officer does to engage with students. I would like to see a day out on the boat, because that is a huge component. We have routine rescue operations that are occurring in Lake Sammamish, and we're bringing patrol guys in to do it, to supplement the Marine Unit. And it's very little training. Here's a vest, throw it on, we're getting out there. You saw that with the plane crash. Every single person, every single deputy working in the Sammamish Police Department needs some basic water safety training, a vest, and some familiarization of what might be asked of them, because that is a real part of what it is to be with the Sammamish Police Department. I would like to spend a day... Them to spend a day with the detective unit, to see, is that something they want to do? Not only does that further their career, if they're interested in that, but it could help create more robust investigations on their end if they know what detectives are looking for in their paperwork, right? As opposed to just coming from a patrol perspective, they can see kind of a global perspective of what a prosecutor might be looking for. So that is a week-long program I hope to put together in the spring, just our new officer onboarding program. And this, I still can't... Ryan, I can't speak to this. Chief, I'm happy to back you up on it.
Thanks, sir.
As far as police communications goes, I will tell you that Chief Lisat and Sergeant Elias make my job incredibly easy. They have a phenomenal engagement rate with all the information that they are pushing out, 6.63%. I get excited about 3% to 5% engagement rate, so anything over that is incredible. It's authoritative and informational content, and people are absorbing it and doing stuff with it. And again, I can't tell you how easy the chief and sergeant Elias make my job to do as far as outreach when it comes to our police department. Thank you. And with that, any questions?
Councilmember Indapuri.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thankful for the lovely picture and the trip that we had. It was a gorgeous day, so thank you. You know, I wanted to... I think you referred to some of the city goals, like, you know, environment, climate, transparency, trust and transparency. I'm wondering, at the city level, are you working with the city manager to make sure that some of the goals that you might have align with the city council's goals as well? Is that a discussion?
I believe so. Every major priority I put out, of course, screening with the city manager to make sure that it's in alignment with it.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, we speak frequently.
Great. I think what I would like to see next time, you know, when you give the training is... Or when you give the presentation is maybe where are you seeing gains or what are you doing as a police department for our DEIB goals? And, yeah, so I think I would really like to see more on that front. I think, you know, the opioid crisis, that's a real thing for Sammamish, so seeing that data in the presentation, and, you know, what difference has some of the outreach made, right? Because I think that is something maybe you can definitely touch upon. I think that would be really good to know. I was curious to know, you mentioned you're going to do one event in partnership with the Eastside Fire and Rescue. Are you planning... I mean, do you typically do some events also with the King County Sheriff's Office?
Yes, but that's on a much larger departmental scale. Is there something specific that...
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, you have a lot of training, like, you're creating your own training materials or, you know, just outreach materials right now. Can we piggyback on something that's already been created by the Sheriff's Office that you can potentially use? Or like, you know, the DEIB efforts or some community engagement efforts, can there be some partnership or overlap? Because, so, you know, looking at the dashboard, you did say, you know, there are some cases that are just not going to be there. There are some cases that you actually don't even handle, right? But you probably get the questions, like, the really high-profile ones that we've had in the city last year and this year. But it's the Sheriff's Office who's handling that. So I'm just trying to figure out or understand, you know, how does that synergy work, and especially when we're communicating with our residents here in Sammamish.
I meet with and have a leadership meeting with the Sheriff's Office every month, but we even have smaller meetings specifically between Precinct 2, which is how we came at this community academy idea. We're trying to localize some of the interests of what we have here in Precinct 2, which might be very different than, say, the Southwest Precinct. But to your point, yes, we meet every month to discuss what programs are going on, and before we try and implement them, what challenges are they seeing? So if we try and do the same, how can we kind of move beyond those or never have to deal with those challenges? But, yeah, for instance, the active shooter training I mentioned, that's an idea I'm completely taking from Shoreline PD. That was probably one of the more beneficial things I've ever experienced as a police officer. Not my idea, but I'm happy to take it, and that's something that I see if we do here. I fully believe, and it's a success, that we can... We'll have other precincts asking to do the same thing. So I'm at every leadership meeting asking, you know, "What are you guys doing?" And if it's something that seems feasible and aligned with our values and mission here, then that's something I'm going to look into.
Can you talk a little bit about gun violence in Sammamish?
Is there something specific that...
I'm just curious. I mean, gun violence and access to guns, and I think kids especially having guns is rising throughout the nation. So I'm just curious to know, are those the same trends that we are seeing in Sammamish? I mean, again, on that dashboard, you don't see any specific, you know, cases related to that or reports related to that, right? So just was curious about what the trend is for Sammamish.
I'm not seeing any trends for Sammamish. I stand by that. The data that I see is that this is still the safest city in the state of Washington, 13th safest in the country. I don't think you're going to see a deviation from that next year. And although we have had gun crimes here this last year, and I can't really speak to them as they are under investigation, but anomalies, this is not part of our culture here. I don't see guns being taken off kids at school. Absolutely a relevant question to be asking routinely. I just, I'm not seeing it here in Sammamish.
That's great to hear. On the dashboard, I know I could see, like, simple assault, but are domestic violence or... Yeah, I mean, I think I was very specifically curious about domestic violence. Are those cases called out or no?
The reason that dashboard is somewhat challenging is because it speaks in a different language than we do here in the state of Washington by the revised code of Washington. What you're seeing in there is NiBRS data. It's a federal standard, and so some of the things you might see in there are very confusing. There was a one I saw earlier today that had to do with pickpocketing and an act of... I forget. Not language we use here. And I couldn't really make a direct correlation to a specific crime that we would investigate. I would suspect that was something akin to fraud, although we have a fraud title. There are several things in there that just don't quite line up, and you'll see one in there that says, I think, "All Other Offenses." I don't know what that is. We classify through almost like 700 codes specifically what our crimes are here for the King County Sheriff's Office. NiBRS is apparently comfortable grouping a ton of crimes into one thing that's offense "all other." I could figure out what that is, it'd just take me some digging. So when it comes to domestic violence, I would suspect that is going to be in a simple assault, but I don't yet know for sure. This is a really new dashboard, and in fact, the modifications we made to it for us, for the city, happened in the last two weeks, I believe. So as I know more, as I become more familiar with the dashboard, I'll let you know, but I would suspect DV is going to be in that simple assault category.
And you mentioned the canine units. How many canines do we have in our canine unit?
So we have specialized canines. So the canines that can go out and track humans, I would say we probably have six or eight. We probably have 20 down at Sound Trans that are specialized in bomb detection. So very... We used to have narcotics dogs. We almost exclusively got rid of those and stopped training them when we no longer had a need. There are still a few, because we still have felony-level drug offenses, and we still need that capability, but the use of the narcotics canine has been greatly diminished in the years, over the last few years. Not that they don't exist, they're just fewer, so...
Makes sense. My last question. You know, training and, you know, like, diversity training, cultural training, that is really important to staff, or other kinds of training, right? Like, when you're dealing with a mental health crisis, you know, how should you respond? Can you just tell us how you keep up your staff with that training and how that has really helped our community?
Certainly. And actually, part of that is easy. The Sheriff's Office requires that every single deputy attend 40-hour CIT through the Criminal Justice Training Commission, and then receives annual training in crisis intervention. And that could look different every single year. In fact, it does. Last year's was autism awareness. The year before was, I believe, I believe it was alcohol. But you'll see that curriculum change every single year. So we have a solid 40-hour basis, and then an annual refresh. And I'm currently working with EFER to try and roll out some more advanced training here through their Core Connect program. I have some hurdles I need to overcome, but to really kind of bring more resources specific to our city that we can rely upon just as our city, not having to look for the greater King County Sheriff's Office to weigh in. So training our officers to be better trained, although I stand by the fact that they are highly trained in mental health crisis. But that's kind of the road I'm going down, is to see what can we do specifically for the city of Sammamish, separate from what the King County Sheriff's offers, which is a robust training regimen.
Great. Thank you. It's always good to hear from you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Indapuri.
Councilmember Howell.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for the dashboard. I'm delighted to see that you're able to pull something through that you know that everyone here has been asking for, so I appreciate the effort there. I have just a couple of questions. And it has to... Well, first one has to do with EFER to a certain extent, is that there is this intersection between which you do and what EFER does. They do one kind of reporting, they have their own database of statistics, where they talk about that they go to someone's home and they help them with a crisis. There may be times when you may be there as well. I'm not quite sure where that data is captured, as if you're both at the same thing, and then someone else, you know, takes over that, then that means the other party can leave. So I'm trying to get just a better sense of that, is how often does that happen? I understand it would happen through Core Connect, would be the logical kind of holding place for that kind of information. And in your experience, is that still happening, or is it more likely than not happening now?
That we're both showing...
That where you're showing up at the same time with EFER? Or has it been kind of consistent?
I haven't been in the field in some time on those calls. I would say that... I can't imagine it's changed. There's still that moment in time where you have a crisis and you're sending all your resources to it, and...
All at once.
And you'll figure out when you get there what you have and send away those resources you don't need. And that Core Connect component is still something that I firmly believe in. Jamie Formasana has built something very special with that. I would like to be a part of it, but we have a long way to go for that. And trying to figure out, before we deploy resources, what is this? What are we looking at? Is this mental health? Is this something else? Do we need to send the police or not? And we're in the early stages of that conversation.
Okay, it is really tricky, and it is difficult. It is something that we're... That those of us on the EFER board are trying to also make sure that we understand completely so that the correct resources are being deployed at the right time, just for expediency, for efficiency, and even to control expenses to a certain extent. Another question I had had to do with the training that you're doing with active shooter, now that you're in the process of trying to build and put into place. When I... As part of the emergency management committee I'm on, the school districts have really come out loud saying they don't have budget for this. Now, I know that what you're putting together is different. It's actually to train yourselves on how well EFER and police can work together on a crisis scenario so that you understand communications, lines of communication, who's in charge, and so forth. However, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to, as you expand on this, to be able to create a model for the school districts can all participate if they choose to? Because what struck me is that they said they don't have the budget for this, and yet here you are in the process of trying to build something. I see a gap.
I did have some conversations, as did Sergeant Elias with... Was that Lake Washington? With one of the school administrators. And what we discussed was the fact that there's probably a day during the regular summer training where that might be feasible at no extra cost, just we would just build that into their training.
That would be...
But that's a crucial component. We need... And one, it can be fun for them. They can be actors in this. That's how it worked out in Shoreline. Some students, in fact, they got to be actors, but that communication piece is crucial in a significant event. And so I will drive to make sure that that occurs. We need EFER, we need us, we need the school district, all working together to solve that problem. And I think we decided that the summer is when it makes the most sense, coupled with, hopefully, their regular mandatory training.
That's great, and I'll just be kind of checking in just to see just how that's progressing, to see if it is an opportunity where teachers would be able to potentially participate if it is an opportunity where teachers would be able to potentially participate so that they could get that training that they are asking for. My final question, I would imagine you would say that if you were to pick the one thing that you wish you could change right now would be having more staff. So I'll just take that off the table. What's the second thing that you wish you could have right now that you think would make a difference here in Sammamish?
Equipment.
Oh, really? What equipment?
We are one of the few contracts that don't have stop sticks, which is what you throw out in the street to stop a fleeing vehicle. In a world where we can't chase suspects anymore, the ability to throw spikes across the street to slowly deflate their tires as they're fleeing the scene buys us time to draw on resources, to set up containment and to still catch people. We don't possess those. I think it's not anyone's fault. I don't, I just don't think anyone's asked for it previously. Just this last week, one of our deputies who was on the SWAT team came to me and said, I don't think we have like normal breaching equipment, which is a hooligan, like a pry bar, a sledgehammer and a ram get through heavy metal frame doors. That doesn't necessarily have to do with a barricaded subject. I've had to, I've had to kick in doors when I knew a senior citizen had fallen on the other side and I just could not get through. And I kicked, the last time I kicked a door, about 50 times before I was able to get through. A ram is a resource that we should have and I, it's my fault that I didn't see beforehand that we didn't possess that, but I've already placed the order for it. That's a very attainable piece of equipment. It should be arriving this week. Everyone in our department knows that we're trying to build out to be a totally self-sufficient police department where we don't necessarily always have to rely on Precinct Two or Woodinville to come to our aid. When we have that stuff readily available, we're, I would love to see a robust drone program here. And I think it's finally financially feasible. The two drones that we have, one is an asset to the Marine Unit, the other is an asset to the SWAT team. We can't count on them because they may be deployed elsewhere. However, the ability to chase a burglar in the air with a drone buys us time, distance, shielding, these are the three things that we're always talking about. So we can bring in resources, safely surround and take someone into custody. Better than that, here in the city of Sammamish, drones with polarized lenses would be critical for water rescue. Polarized lens, you can see deeper in the water. We do have the one with the Marine Unit, but if that one goes down or if Nate is elsewhere, I would like to see multiple drones here. And they come at different price points. There's a $2,000 drone, there's an $18,000 drone. We don't need a bunch of $18,000 drones. It might be good to have one. Another thing that came up this last summer, coupled with the plane crash and a couple of the water rescues, I don't know how much you saw about the rescue we had earlier in the summer, but it was a teenage girl on a paddleboard. She was in her jeans, without a leash on her paddleboard, had no ability to swim and was without a vest. And she was in 60 feet of water, nowhere near shore. She was with two friends and a kayak that was taking on water. They didn't know how to swim. They didn't have vests on. They're in 60 feet of water, nowhere near shore. And there's a dad on the shore waving, this is something where we need swift response and time is everything. And getting a boat in the water takes time and getting resources, getting deputies off patrol into boats to go affect that rescue, that's time we don't have. And it worked out well and I'm so grateful that it did. I am in contact with the sheriff's office right now to see if they would entertain the idea of helping us afford some jet skis, some things that we would have already on the water that is rapid water response. And I think that's, that's something that is critical for the city of Sammamish. We're having way too many water incidents and we'll continue to have water incidents. And the ability to get out there as fast as possible is everything. So.
You know, I appreciate you coming up with a shopping list, just on the spur of the moment there. So clearly, these things have been on your mind.
They have.
And I would ask if it's appropriate for the city manager and you chief to actually just have a list put together so that we understand what some of these things and where our responsibility is to help supply what might be necessary or if we have to go through other resources.
And to be fair to the city manager, I just brought, he has never heard of jet skis ever before.
That, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
If I could put in a plug to follow up on that, that's slightly separate. I think if we really did have a rainbow of cash that came available, I think trying to build out the crisis co-response model would probably be the number one priority just because that's really a place where I think there's a lot of value to be added. As part of the ongoing regional conversation and the levy that just passed about crisis care centers that are supposed to be cited and built, I think in the meantime, really resources that are not necessarily additional police officers, but are more on the mental health side to help us be able to respond, I think is a, is a place where at some point in time, we'll need to have that conversation collectively. So just to put that plug in.
Well, and thank you for your responses and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Hi, Chief. Thank you for your presentation and all the work that you've been doing since, I think, the last time you came, I think that was earlier this year. I think at the time, you didn't have the resource officer and now we do. And obviously, he's been doing a lot of work. It sounds like you're building a drone program and thank you for the dashboard. That was going to be one of my questions this evening, so I guess I don't have to ask that. I do support the active shooting, active shooting training for the PD. And just like Councilmember Howe was talking about, it would be great to have that be more in partnership with the school district. I think we're very fortunate so far. We haven't had any sort of major incident here in the city. And I'm not aware of what is, what the school district actually does to, in terms of training for their teachers and their students. So if there's some sort of program or anything that you guys can do to work together and let us know, that would be fantastic.
Certainly.
There was one topic that came up the last time you were here and that was the issues that were happening in Trussex. And you had mentioned some sort of neighborhood watch and rolling out some sort of program. I don't know if that, if anything has happened on that, in that area.
Trussex rolled out their own program, which I'm totally on board with because I want that community connection. I want all of them speaking amongst themselves. If they're seeing something, they need to talk to each other and then call the police, not necessarily in that order. But they started their own safety committee and Detective Greer has been a part of that, showing up when they have community meetings to discuss, again, SEP Ted, how they can enhance their home security and really address their concerns and make sure that their voices are heard. Excuse me, my voice is going. But no, we have not had any, I would say, ongoing since the spring with Trussex. They seem to have developed their own committee and I haven't heard anything since.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it would be a good idea to have whatever was implemented in Trussex sort of documented to help other HOAs that may be undergoing like, or may undergo or may possibly have similar issues in the future, that there is something that we can just, you know, go out and start communicating.
And you can count on that. When we see an HOA that's having an issue like that, we'll be reaching out to them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I've a couple areas. Thank you. I would, I'll send an email. I think it would be great on the dashboard if we can get some definitions. Like I was just glancing at it, like, what's the difference between robbery and burglary to the layperson? Those are the same thing, but to you, they're clearly very different. So that'll be great. But along the lines of what Deputy Mayor was asking about, I think it would be awesome if we didn't wait for HOAs to come to us, but we took a more proactive approach. Like here's what we want to be going out to all of our communities and how we improve that community policing, how the communities can improve their communications and alertness and like you said, you know, kind of making their home safe. So I don't know if that's something that you are planning to do with Nate or not, but I just think the more proactive we can be or at least have the sort of what a community can do in a box kind of idea. So it's just sitting on the shelf, ready to go. But I think that would be awesome. Along those lines, it's hard to tell on the dashboard, but are there any, you know, kind of crime trends that you're seeing around the region and particular in Sammamish, especially around property crimes, that we should be sharing with the community to let them know, hey, we are seeing an uptick in this or speeding or whatever it is, right? Like I think that's one of the things I'd like to kind of see quarter over quarter. And I think we're hoping the dashboard might tell us, but I can see where there are challenges with that. But just to be able to give the community an idea of what's going on. Hey, we are seeing an uptick in break-ins and that's happening region-wide or nationwide. And here's what we're doing about it, right? And here's what you can do about it and here's how you can be proactive. I think that would be really awesome. I am hearing from communities where there might be some break-ins that are occurring and people want to know, what are we doing as a city? What are you doing? Probably really, when they say we, they mean you. But what are, what are we doing about it? And then what can they do about it, right? Because it is sometimes very unsettling to people and I think we, we want them to be secure and we want them to feel secure. So I think that would be really helpful if we could, even if it's, even if you can't give exact data because there are things that are under investigation, if we can just say, hey, we're seeing an uptick in these things and here's what we're doing and here's what you should do. I think that would be great. And I think to the extent that we can share that information, you know, as part of a, you know, monthly public safety announcement or something, and I think we can all help amplify that as well and get that out to the HOAs as just kind of a regular update. I think that would be really awesome.
It's been in my mind as part of still building out kind of our, our social media platform and kind of what those communications look like. I got to find that balance of getting the information out there without causing panic.
Right.
And that balance weighs on me.
Sure.
But it is certainly on my mind. And I've discussed it with Ryan, kind of what that communication might look like.
Yeah, and even if you're concerned about the, talking about any kind of trends, even if we can at least get some of those public safety announcements out there, right? About what people can be doing. Cause I have heard, being out in the community, you know, where there have been break-ins, people are concerned and they don't know what to do. And I think we discussed, you know, it's hard to get the communication out to those communities. And I think, I think we should help, right? With, hey, we, you know, here's, here's what you can do. Here's how we can help you. Here's what we are doing, right? Cause I know, I know you're aware and I know you guys are doing stuff. And I just want the community to know that you're doing stuff as well. So I think that would be awesome. Now I want to pivot. I want to talk about your hybrids. So can we get the stats on those? Like what kind of hybrids are there? Are they plug-in hybrids? Are they like?
Ryan asked for that data and I was not able to get it in time. These are brand new to us, but I can certainly come up with that data.
Yes, please. I would love that. And I'd love, again, as I think Councilmember Nupure, was it, talked about, as we kind of align your priorities and our priorities, I'd love to know more about, you know, are we moving, like hybrids are great, all-electric's even better. I know there are some challenges with that, but like what's that long-term plan? Because literally every year, new all-electric vehicles are coming out that have longer and longer ranges. So I'd love to understand how, how we're aligning those things. Since you do have a plan, you know, as we replace them, that's great. I just would like to see us being able to leapfrog some of those technologies as we move forward.
I will keep you updated with that. Those decisions are entirely made by the King County Executive. And I thought we were moving to all-electric, but there are significant hurdles to overcome with charging and our take-home vehicles. And are we, are we putting charging stations in every officer's home? I think that became more of a cost than the county was willing to absorb. But those, this conversation's been going on for several years and I think this is where we've landed for the time being, absent technological advancement or diminished costs.
I'd love to get more information on that because I'm on the K4C and we're actually having a meeting on Thursday. So I would love to bring this up with the executive. So yeah, that would be great to just understand.
Those conversations occurred up here and I was just not privy to them. I just know that this is kind of where we've landed.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. Thank you again. I think it's great and I think the more we can communicate with the community and make sure when things are happening, we understand how we're, how we're serving those folks who have been victims of crime and how we're communicating with them. I think that's really important.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Hi, Steve. This is just by way of a comment. I'm glad to see that you're working on that active shooter training in conjunction with our school districts. Just from a personal point, standpoint, I have a teenager at Skyline High School and I know that's something on that age group that is somewhat in the back of their minds a lot, that this is something we've been, have not had too many incidents. I think maybe we've had two in the time my kids have been in public schools in Sammamish where we've had scares, as it were, as opposed to really anything real that happened. But I think our teens are, have it in the back of their head all the time. This is potentially something that could happen. Anytime there is like a rather loud noise that happens in the school, happens during lunch, everybody stops and looks and are slightly terrified. So I think our teens walk around with a certain amount of stress on them because they know that that has happened in other jurisdictions. Even though it hasn't happened to them yet, they're, they're concerned about it quite often. And it's just another thing that adds to their, their daily load of anxiety that they walk around with, Generation Z that they are, that they, I think it's something they think about quite often. They don't talk about it because I think they are so used to thinking about it that they probably don't know that other kids of other generations never thought about this. So I'm really glad to see that you're doing work about this and I think our teens really could use that kind of support. I know that the professionals here know how to handle it if it were to happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you, Chief. Training, you mentioned an acronym, I think it was CPI training or Crisis Prevention Training?
Oh, CIT, Crisis Intervention Training.
Crisis Intervention Training? Okay, yeah. Thank you. And then for the clarification and then, I don't know if you've taken a look or seen, I've been working 12 years with Officer Craig in the Bellevue School, Bellevue Police Department. And just wondering if you've had a chance to have a chat with him about the innovative, creative training that he's doing with Bellevue Police Department on similar type of tactics in dealing with mental health.
I have not. I will gladly reach out to him.
I think you should, I talked to him today and so I just thought you might want to have a chance to meet with Officer Craig and just see what he and Officer Park are working on.
I know Officer Park.
With the, yeah, he's, he's the head or the lead for that training and it's what they're taking all the Bellevue police officers through. And so I just, I look at that and just, because of my, also my, what I do when I'm not here, it just seems to me is very valuable. It's something that we've been working with our students as well, that I've been working with students and with officers and SROs for now over 10 years. And it just seems like it's very effective and is kind of addressing the issue at the best level. But it seems to be a best practice.
I suspect, and to your point, sir, we put Matt Martin, our SRO, and Nate Greer, our CEO. And I think Sergeant Elias attended advanced training on mental health at the University of Washington, early part of the summer. And at least our invites came through Core Connect to see really how we could drive home this component with, with youth and the schools. But I will align our communications with Bellevue's and see if they're doing something different or what else that they're doing that we're not.
Thank you. That was my.
Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any other buttons. So thank you for the presentation. I don't necessarily have a question, but I know you'll be coming back soon. I guess one question would be if you do get back to any of the follow-up emails, if you could just do all city council, that would be great.
Certainly.
Just to see kind of where things are headed. And thank you to Sergeant Elias too. And I'm sure you will be back sooner than later.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Certainly will.
Yeah. Thank you all. Thanks. All right. The main event, city managers proposed mid-biennium adjustments to the 2024 portion of the 2324 budget. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with council this evening. I'm going to start off by saying this has been a team effort. You're looking at the majority of the team that's been working on this in the room and, and what's that?
I said, there's like nobody here.
But I mean.
Our small but mighty team. Yes, I know, but I'm like, this is like a tiny little group. Yeah. Not even a quorum, barely.
So we have Mark Barrett online, who is our Administrative Services Director. And Mark has been pinch hitting as Finance Director as well. Chris Giannini, who is Deputy Finance Director, Rachel Bianchi, Mike Sugg and myself all have been working on this. We think this is sort of a critical juncture where we are in our budgeting process. And so want to walk through what's in this presentation. I'm going to kick it off by saying and apologize. I'm going to kick it off by saying, and apologize upfront, some of the numbers on here are a little bit different than what were in the agenda packet. We will post this once the meeting is over, probably first thing in the morning, so that folks can see what's on here. So with that, I'm going to walk through this a little bit. And so just a quick overview, as you'll recall, we adopted the biennial budget a year ago in February, in fall of 2022. And at that time, the revenue expenditure figures were created with the best estimate that we had of the future. We have better ones now because we're a year in, or almost a year into the biennium. And so the mid-biennial budget allows us the opportunity to do some updating. State law requires that we do a review, but it doesn't require us to do anything. However, we are, because Councilmember Howes is looking at me very quizzically, you adopt a two-year budget and that allows for revenue to come in and for spending authority for that full two years. So technically, you are required to do a review, but you're not required to take any action if everything looks good. So however, we are at a point right now where there are some proposed changes that we think are important to make. And the first is we want to right-size the 2024 budget and reset the base budget moving forward. Recall as we go into this, the budget, when I use the term budget, that essentially relates to spending authority. When you adopt a budget, you're giving us authority to spend and that, making sure that there are revenues available to spend those dollars for the, for the biennium. So we want to amend that and adjust it moving forward. We also want to right-size revenues and the revenue forecast so that they match up with where we are today and what we're seeing moving forward in 2024. Additionally, we want, this is the beginning of additional refinements that will mostly come out in the next biennial budget process next year. So we're going to do budgeting a little bit different. This is the first step. So Mike, if you would. So what is a mid-biennial adjustment? Like I said, it's adjustment to increase or decrease both spending and/or revenue, or both. It's based on the prior projections and updated information. And it allows us to be a little more accurate for the second year of the biennium. So going into this process, my direction to the staff were, I asked all departments to identify a 2% reduction in 2024, with the exception of Public Safety and Human Services. Part of that direction was I wanted to make sure there's no impact to service delivery. And Finance was asked to right-size our expenditure and revenue lines. And we'll get to that in just a minute. In addition, given the recommendations to me from the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force, we felt it important for the city to take the first run at what the task force recommended, but to do it this year and not wait. We also want to be transparent in our biennial budgeting process and share that some of the 23 expenses and programs will be rolled over into 2024 because we didn't get to accomplish everything we needed to in 2023, even though the year's not over yet. We anticipate some of those pieces will be rolling over. I'll get to more of each of these as we move forward with the slides. Additionally, as part of this revised budgeting process, I'm also recommending that we consider a 25% operating reserve for our reserve fund, as opposed to what it currently is today. And we are going to do some, we're going to prepare for additional refinements and adjustments in the 25 and 26 budget. So drop into that a little bit more. Our proposed departmental changes, all of these adjustments gets to the 2% of the adopted budget for 2024. So this is a reduction with one exception, and that is a couple of our regional association dues went up just a little bit. And that's why you see that under the city council item, there is a slight increase. Otherwise, and then Human Services, same deal. Costs went up a little bit, so there's a little bit of an increase there. Otherwise, everything else is, gets us to that 2% reduction across the board. I want to be clear that it is not the same for every department, as you can see, but collectively, it gets us to that 2% amount. If you would, next slide. So for the actual budget adjustments for 2024, you'll see that number at the top is the number rolled over from the prior slide. That's the $1,022,000 and change. The next thing we needed to do is we need to right-size the cost of the police budget. Initially, we were told that there was going to be a 20% increase. That increase turned out to be not as much as that. So we are able to realize an additional $719,000 that we do not need to spend in 2024. We are also right-sizing the IT inter-fund transfer. It actually wound up being double counted in the budget. And so we are pulling those dollars back out and they're not needed in 2024. In addition, we had a slight reduction in medical premium rate costs. And then for transparency's sake, we do anticipate needing a little bit more for litigation costs in 2024. We want to make sure that we can cover what our costs are going to be. So that is actually an increase to the litigation budget for 2024. All told, this equates to a 4% reduction in the overall 2024 budget. So the 2% that we asked for in departmental cuts, along with these other items, gets us to 4% overall. And to be clear, that adjusts the, the base of the budget moving forward down by 4% moving Additionally, as Councilmember Stewart has pointed out, and rightly so, interest income has come in higher than anticipated. I want to be clear about this, that this is net revenue, not gross revenue for straight interest. Because even though interest income has gone up due to the Fed increasing interest rates rather dramatically, some of our permitting and plan review fees are actually decreasing. In addition, we also have some revenues that are coming in less than anticipated that are not part of the general fund. And I want to be really clear about this. The additional net revenues that you're seeing here are for the general fund, not for some of the other funds where, for instance, REIT dollars goes into our capital funds, not into the general fund, just as an example. So we are realizing an additional $2.9 million in revenues for the biennium. So I want to remind council that the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force recommended that the city responsibility, that we find reductions in expenses. And they're, they were proposing that we look at $1 million over three years, but we felt it important to take the first look this year. And so we were able to find 2% overall, which equates to that $1 million. However, the total amount equates actually to 4% when you include the other adjustments. We want to be clear in transparency, transparency in our biennial budgeting process. Again, council adopted a two-year budget that includes spending and revenue for that entire two years. We do have some salary savings. I want to thank Councilmember Stewart for bringing this up. We do have some salary savings that are available because we've had some staff vacancies. And we've also had some areas where we have not been able to spend the full amount we anticipated in 2023. Some of those pieces we'll actually spend in 2024. Sustainability is one of those pieces. We didn't get to everything that we thought we were going to. And there are some items in what council will be getting as a final sustainability plan later this year, where we might want to do some implementation early if we have some funds available. In addition, we had a conversation with council about the potential of doing an amended Town Center EIS. That is, we could take some of those savings and attribute it towards that. And we have some department projects that are not yet completed that will roll over. Because this is a biennial budget process, we don't have to do a carry-forward because it's all part of the same biennium. So want to be clear about that as part of our budgeting process. So what does that mean? I want to be clear and careful as we walk through this because sometimes the numbers get a little bit confusing. They walk both across and down. So I'm going to start with the first adopted budget. And I'm going to, I'm going to go with the column, not the row, so going down. Our general fund revenues were less than our general fund expenditures in the adopted biennial budget. The difference was about $12.9 million. $7.75 million of that was a transfer to capital for the Fire Station 82 project. The rest of it was recognition that we had a fiscal gap between our revenues and expenditures. And that gap totaled to $5.1 million. With these proposed adjustments, what you'll see in the, in the middle column going down is that we've reduced the difference between revenues and expenditures down to $7.5 million and change. And if you exclude the capital transfers that we're already planning on doing, we are actually coming out $200,000 to, in the black. So we, between the reductions in the spending, proposed reductions in spending, along with the adjustments necessary to make, and the increase in interest revenue, that gets us to projected, again, these are projected numbers for 2024, for the total biennium to be $200,000 to the good. Now, that does not include additional savings or underspend that we don't get to. Those will be realized at the end of the biennium. When we get all the way done, we will do a true-up. And if there are funds remaining, those will go back into the general fund fund balance. But from an operating perspective for the general fund, we are now projecting $200,000 to the good for our operating budget for the rest of the biennium. So if, can you go back one, Mike? So I want to be clear about this. This is the proposed city manager budget for discussion tonight. And as we move forward, we're looking for feedback on this approach. And if council is comfortable with this, then we would bring it back in, in true form and we'll update all the budget numbers accordingly. So a couple more slides to go. So one of the other pieces that the consultants recommended and that we agree with is, or I, my proposal is that we increase our, our reserve to, instead of a 10% of revenues, 25% operating reserve. And this goes hand in hand with future budget adjustments, where we would get much closer to actual, we would have a slightly bigger reserve. And then if we reach a point where we needed to come back and ask for more budget authority, the reserve would be big enough to address that. The majority of this will be addressed, we, I'm proposing in the 2526 biennial budget process, but this would be the first step. This is a step that could be delayed until next year if council wanted to wait. But this is a recommendation that I think is important to look at. One of the other pieces that I do want to share, and one of the reasons that this table is on here, is the operating reserve should be set aside and not part of fund balance. It should be set in its own item and pulled out so that it's not available for use. Anything that's in fund balance should be available for use. So moving forward, we are proposing in the budget, pulling that out of fund balance and setting it in there. And again, this would be an item, that dollar amount would be, it would be available and it wouldn't need to be added to unless it was used, drawn down and needed to be replaced. So once it's full up, it doesn't need to be refilled every year. It just needs to be maintained, if that makes sense. So the next steps are, we're looking for direction on the 4% expenditure reduction in the 24, 2024 general fund budget, the revenue strategy for recognizing additional interest revenue, and the changing reserve level. If council, depending on the direction council gives, we will bring back the budget document in the first meeting in November, based on your direction tonight. With that, we will update the long-term projections as part of the fiscal model for the long-term sustainability, so that we can see what it looks like. If council so chooses to look at a couple of different options, we can bring both of those back to say, what would it look like if we did X or Y? And then you'll be able to make decisions at that point. And then refine, as we move forward, the 2526 budget process to better align budgeted and actual revenues and expenditures to marry up with the difference in the strategic reserve. So I'm almost there. Bear with me. The next slide is, this would be the schedule. Where we are tonight is our mid-buy review. Depending on direction from tonight, we will then go back and update the forecast model to be prepared to come back on November 8th. That would include a public hearing as part of the general mid-buy budget process. November 14th, we would come back and present and discuss on the long-term Fiscal Sustainability Implementation Plan, in part based on the decisions council makes on the budget. And then at the 20, November 21st meeting, we would consider adoption of that long-term implementation plan. So these are all, as you can see, closely aligned, so that when we get done with the entire budget process, the plan would be that we would have a revised budget for 2024 along with an adopted long-term implementation plan. So with that, I'm sure there'll be questions. So please, and the team and I are here to answer any questions council has.
Thank you. That was pretty painless. That was a good presentation. It was good. Councilmember Stewart.
Scott, I just want to thank you and the team. The team that's here. I want to thank you guys. I know this has been a lot of work and I know you kind of came into this and had to do a budget the first time without having the luxury, if you will, of being able to dive as deeply into it. So I really appreciate this direction, where we get a lot tighter on our budget with the bigger reserve fund, so that if there are changes and challenges, which there always are, but we have more transparency and more oversight on those. So I really appreciate all of that. I just want to ask, and I know you and I talked about this a little bit, but I just want to ask a clarifying question in part, so I understand and so the public understands. So all of this is looking at the 2024 budget. It's not, we're not able to, at the moment, take any adjustments for the underspend that we have for 2023, which I just want to call out and to staff's credit, right? Like, you guys run a lean ship. We have fairly substantial underspends in 2023. So there's a good chance that when we get to the end of the biennium, we'll have even more good news. So for example, just through the end of August, we, because of vacancies, we underspent our personnel by $1.75 million just through the end of August, right? So that's an adjustment that's not even showing up here yet. Is that correct?
It's somewhere in there, yeah. I think that those numbers are a little bit more updated because we're a little bit farther along, but from the last FMR that's been available, I believe that's correct.
So that, that's also more good news. And then I just wanted to ask, my, my question here is, because we can't make those adjustments and, and kind of make the actual adjustments for 2023, how do we, how do we look at that when you are spending on 2024? Because it's a biennium and the, the spending authority you have is the total amount, not just the 2024 numbers. How do we make sure that that money, and I'm not implying that you guys would do anything wrong, but how do we make sure that that money doesn't get spent on something else? Because it's there in the budget, but it was allocated for people that weren't here and so they never will be, right? Nobody was here through August, they're not going to be here. How do we make sure of that?
Well, so two pieces, Councilmember, and I appreciate the question. I think one piece is, some of that money I know was available. We've also used it to bring on resources temporarily while we tried to hire up. And so some of that money is, is getting spent in that to try to make up for the fact that someone is not available in that position. We have at least a couple of positions right now that fall into that category. The other piece is we're trying to be transparent now with what we know to say, if there are things to spend it on that we think are important, we'll bring those forward and talk about it in those moments. And that's why in the, in the presentation, we wanted to talk about the potential of doing the amended EIS work or other items that might, might come forward. So we want to be transparent all the way through. Don't necessarily know what all, all those things are, but as things come up, and they always do, I think that's the opportunity to start practicing what we're talking about. Even though, to your point, we do have monies available to spend, that we would come to talk about what it is with council so that there's clear transparency about what's being done with the dollars.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And then all of this is really focused on the general fund. There are. And then, all of this is really focused on the general fund. You mentioned one area, REIT, where, you know, the revenues are coming in less, but that's not part of the general fund. But we don't talk about any of the other things. For instance, the interest income for the other funds is actually even bigger. So will there be a mid-buy, when you come back with the mid-buy, will there be proposals for those other funds to adjust any of the revenue projections in 2024 as well?
We will certainly both realize interest income, as well as reductions in, it balances out to not as much as, I mean, I think you're aware, in total, it's not as much as you might think, because a lot of our revenues are actually coming in less than interest earnings. But yes, we will update all of the funds, because council budgets by fund, so each fund, if there's either new or less revenue to be realized, we will be updating those as part of the total budget. But for this purpose tonight, we wanted to focus on the general fund, because that's where the operating budget lives, if you will.
Totally. And then there was one other line item that had, well, two other things. One is our capital expenditures, again, not the general fund, but we are, and I know part of that is probably a timing issue, but we are way underspent on what we were projecting to spend in 2023. I think we've only spent 25% of what we were projecting to spend in 2023 for capital. So wondering, again, will that be something you'll bring back in the mid-buy and look at? Because I assume some of those projects are going to shift to 2024, and then that may push some of the 2024 projects out, or whatever, but that's a really big number, in terms of dollars.
Thank you, councilmember, appreciate the question. I think from that perspective, capital in particular, if those projects are, have the go-ahead, even if they start in 2024, I think what we would look to do is, if we reach a point where there's a project that we will not be able to complete by the end of the biennium, we would come and let council know about that. But recall, within the capital funds themselves, the fund balance comes in, or it goes out solely within that fund. So all we would do is, we would see, to your point, an underspend potentially by the end of the biennium of that capital fund, if you will. So for instance, if Parks doesn't get to all of the projects that they had proposed, then you would, it wouldn't use as much of the fund balance as they had projected originally. So you will see that, and you'll see that adjustment if we know about it now, but part of the, you know, the FMR is, even if projects are kicked off, sometimes the billing doesn't come in until, you know, down the road for some of these, when we're in construction in particular. And so you won't see those show up for a few months, and then you might see that FMR really jump. Because it doesn't come in clean month over month. It jumps all over, depending on when bills come in the door. For instance, every time we pay the, our monthly King County Sheriff's bill, sometimes they come in a couple of months after the fact, and then that really throws the FMR off for a given month.
Yeah, it would be great to just get a little bit of a, you know, sense of where we are, because the budgeted amount for capital is like 43 and 1/2 million, and we've spent 2 and 1/2 to date, or as of the end of August. So like, I get that, like, there's timing issues, but I also feel like sometimes we fall so far behind, we're never really going to catch up. And the same thing's true on the services and charges side. So we have a budgeted of 22.6 million, and we've only spent 9.7 million to date. So that's just another area where some of those things might be timing issues, but some of them might be like, we're not going to catch up. And so if there's a big, you know, if it's a material amount, it just would be good for us to get an understanding. It's also going to affect, right, like, what can we get done on the work plan? And that happens, right? Sometimes things get delayed through no fault of our own, but that also has a huge effect on our budget. And I think that's really important for us to understand that, as we look to implement fiscal sustainability decisions at the end of November, I think that information is really important, because those are going to have a big effect on what that timeline looks like, in terms of when do we need to start having additional revenue? Because we don't want to, we don't want to bring in extra tax, you know, we don't want to levy extra taxes unnecessarily.
Completely agree, and I just, I do, for the, for the majority of what we're talking about, the general fund is not contributing to capital for parks or transportation at the moment.
But I think services and charges is part of the general fund. So it's just something to look at. Those were, like, I just looked at the really big buckets, where we were way under, sort of where we, where we might have thought we were going to be. And that one seems more timed, but again, it could be a timing issue, but I think that would be a really big one, because that one, just looking at it linearly, looks like we may spend 8 million less than we had projected this year. That's a pretty big number, right? So that's where it would be good to understand, if we think that's still going to get spent in addition to everything we're planning in 2024? Or do we need to say, we're probably not going to get to some chunk of work in this biennium, let's take that off the table and out of the budget? So I would just love to see that. But thank you for this, I think this is really important, and I'd love to see, you know, how we can, again, as we go into the decision for the fiscal sustainability, to maybe understand what, even though we can't officially update the budget with things that we are, we know we're not going to spend in 2023, it would be really good to have an idea of what those numbers are. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
Thank you, first of all, to start with a thank you to the sustainability, the fiscal sustainability group, and thank you for following and adhering to some of the advice that you were giving. I think that makes perfect sense. You know, I would agree on the 4% expenditure reduction, that I think is wonderful work. I agree with the revenue strategy and the change reserve level also. But could we please go back to the slide that shows all of the reductions by department? Because I just, thank you. I just wanted to get a better understanding, is this, does this reflect projects that have been eliminated or deferred? Does it reflect hiring that's been eliminated or deferred? I just don't have a good understanding of what these numbers actually reflect. And I, I know it reflects pain by staff, I know that part, but I don't know what this is.
Appreciate that, councilmember. And it's, it's across the board, if you will. It's looking at departments kind of took a scrub of everything and looked at their, you know, might have been a little from here, a little from there. Public Works did a great job of looking at and saying, to councilmember Stewart's point, what are we for sure going to get done, and what aren't we, and are there things? But from a service delivery perspective, nothing is changing, and we are still planning on getting done everything that we've said we're going to get done. We're just trying to do it a little bit on the more lean side, if that makes sense.
It does, and I have a different question now, and it has to do with the information you were given about the police coming in at 20% versus the 14.4. Where did that information come from, and why was it wrong?
It comes from the King County Sheriff's Department, or the Sheriff's Office, and it comes actually from the King County Budget Office. It was a projection on how much they thought the increase in the sheriff's deputy's contract that they were still negotiating would be. And it wasn't, it turned out to be not as much, so. But we had to plan well in advance, they hadn't finished that, and we're kind of stuck on their timeline for those pieces.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Trin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's always been transparency and oversight and award-winning accounting, so good job, that department of the city, so I appreciate that. 4% is okay with me, yes. The revenue strategies, that's a yes. The resource level, that's a no. The long-term projects, projections based on direction, yeah, I mean, we're working on that. So that's to be determined, I guess, would be my thought on that, and it needs more information, but I figure that's coming. This is the first time we're seeing this, so as you continue to bring this process forward, I figure we're going to see more on that.
Yeah, we plan on bringing, I'll say, bringing the model with us, if you will, as part of that, and, you know, when the task force sat with us and looked at what, what does it look like if you do this or that, the, you know, the folks from Baker-Telly ran the model and made changes in real time. We're hopeful that our own Lori Wile and from the Finance Department can do that for us when we get to this point, so that council can make informed decisions and look at what that looks like to the model moving forward.
Yeah, and those were snapshot, that was a snapshot in time as well, so.
Right, right. And so, as we know more, and this is the commitment to having the model available as we do these each year, we'll be updating the model each time we do it, so that council can make informed decisions in the year that you're, of the, whatever budget year that is. And again, the hope is to update that over time, so that we are constantly staying ahead of the challenges that may come.
Yeah, and save a little bit of money if you'd like, I'd just be a no on that Town Center IAS, so thank you.
Councilmember Nupure.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thank you for the presentation. I have some, some basic questions, so please bear with me. Our goal as a city is not just to save money, right? Like, it's also to spend. We collect our property taxes, and we collect the money so we can spend for what we plan for, which has been identified in the bigger budget, right? So I just wanted to be clear that, I mean, great job, we're getting more revenue from interest rate, but that's really not our job. I feel like as a council and as a city, our job is to make sure that we are being, you know, fiscally smart and spending it on the right projects. And I think for the most part, this council has done precisely that, I think, and also combining it again with our city goal of being fully transparent. I think I heard you say the word transparent many times today, so thank you for emphasizing that. But also, I think, as councilmember Trin mentioned, you know, our budget has been award-winning for the longest time, because we try not to make mistakes, and we're pretty good at that, and I think the state auditors gives us a thumbs up every single time, so, so thank you for doing that. I just had, so, a process question that I had was, you know, it was great to see that slide where all the departments kind of went through that exercise of where can we reduce our spending? And I think probably one of the triggers was, you know, hearing from the fiscal sustainability group, and that was probably a catalyst. Is that some practice that you will continue as you go into the future years?
Thank you for the question, councilmember. Yes, I mean, I think we're always striving to be as fiscally prudent as possible with our budgets, and there's, there's always opportunity to, as we learn more and as we get better, and we can better project, and we can better right-size what needs to happen by when. That's always something that we're going to strive for as we move forward. And the, and the team collectively, I mean, this was a, across-the-board collective effort by all the departments and their staffs within, to try to say, this is important, and, and we want to make sure that we can continue to deliver on the projects and services that the citizens want. And thank you for the opportunity for the question, because I do want to focus in on one point that the task force said very loud and clear is, they really like and enjoy the services that are provided today, and so we wanted to make sure going into this process that we didn't harm those services, because that was a very clear, not goal, sorry, it's been a long day. It was a very, it was a very clear directive from the task force to say, don't change any of that. Because they had robust conversations, you all who watched the meetings will recall, they had robust conversations about that, and that came out very clearly. And from my perspective, the staff that we have are critical to be able to make that happen. And so those two pieces together, I think, made for the collective effort, that everyone understood that what the goal was. And, and again, cutting for the sake of cutting is not very productive, it doesn't do great things for morale, and it doesn't allow us to get done what we need to get done. However, cutting to ensure that we can be sustainable over time, so that we can continue to do the things that we have either in place now or we're working towards, I think is the really critical piece. And the team did a great job collectively to help us get there. And so I'm really proud of our, of our collective effort to get us to this point, because I think it really shows leadership across our departments to come up with the numbers that we came to.
Great. So my second question, and maybe you don't have a list, but I'd like to see this, is, I know you mentioned there were a lot of department projects that were not completed. I think one of the frustrations that the public has, and sometimes councilmembers too, is that, you know, we're really looking forward to that sidewalk getting completed, and then something happens, and, you know, it gets pushed to the next year, and next year, and next year. So I think we need to have transparency there as well, and then also making sure that those projects get completed. But I think it would be great, again, to just understand why those were not completed.
Sure, and appreciate the question, councilmember. And if I could clarify, maybe I was a little unclear about that, they haven't been completed yet. But within the structure of the biennium, the plan is to get them completed before the end of the biennium. And my, you know, as part of my goals, you all want to know if there's something that we're not going to get done, and why. And so if we get to that point, we will come to you and share with you what, what's going on, and why it's either delayed or is not going to happen. And so, we're not there yet, it's just that we haven't gotten to those items, and they may not be completed before the end of the year. Because technically speaking, the end of the year is coming up really fast. And we just sat in a meeting earlier this week, talking about the January meeting agendas, which seems like a long ways out, and it's right around the corner. So just, projects take more time than you think they will, and so that's, that's more that we just haven't completed them yet. And in terms of 2023 calendar year versus 2023, 24 biennial budget, that's just where we are in the process.
Great. And my last question was, I think the only ask that came out of today's presentation is for our litigation budget, right? I think the additional ask. Do you, top of your head, remember what the litigation budget was for the previous, like, 2022, 24? No, sorry, 2020, 2022?
Yeah, I can pull it up here in a moment. I shared that out with council earlier today, and apologies if you didn't get a chance to look at it. I'm going to go off the top of my head here, I think the 2021 litigation budget was somewhere in the close to a million-dollar range, and I think where we are right now is somewhere in the $300,000 range, 3 to 350. So it's quite a bit less than it was previously, just the realities of where we are today, and some of the things that we, that the city has had to respond to dictate that we, we're projecting needing more to finish out what we're in process with in 2024. I'm happy to resend that, but those are available for council.
I can check, and I didn't have, so, I really appreciate that clarifying point, because I think this is, again, the council taking and putting their finances, you know, using it as a moral compass, and investing in the right priorities, and not frivolous lawsuits. So I really want to make sure that I commend the city council and the city staff as well in being very frugal with our dollars. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Thank you for the presentation, Scott. I'm going to question on the level of service. I know that staff, and we don't want to cut to level of service, are there projects that are coming up that we haven't decided on the level of service? And if I'm recalling correctly, there's the snow removal, and winter's coming around the corner. So does that mean, when that comes back to us, we can keep our current level of service, that it's already in the budget? Or do we have to make that decision still? I'm not clear how that, how that's affected. Or just on all projects, I guess, if there are other projects that this affects?
Great question, councilmember. And again, trying to define a level of service really dictates how we build our budgets. So we won't, in the moment, if you'll recall, council did give us direction on a level of service for snow and ice. You can always change that, but for now, we got direction to keep it at the level that it currently is, and the funding level to maintain that level of service, just for that specific example. But overall, a level of service conversation is in advance of a change, not in the moment of a change, because that makes it really hard to budget. So we're going to continue to try to bring these types of things to you all, so that everyone understands what it is that essentially you're buying, if that makes sense. But, but we won't change that as part of a go or no-go on a project. We'll, like, for instance, the service water management, that level of service conversation was in advance of setting the rates for this year, and we had that last year. So it always leads into a budget review process, not after the fact.
Okay, great. There's the update long-term projections. I know that, you know, there were residents that were pretty alarmed, looking at the charts from the fiscal sustainability over the summer, and what we're doing here is going to affect what those charts look like, correct? And you'll be bringing that back next time?
Absolutely, and that's, we wanted to get direction from you all first, before we bring those back, so that we can have those ready to go ahead of time. And then if you want to make changes in the moment, we can, we can do some adjustments. But yes, I think, you know, the key takeaway here, from my perspective, is that this biennium, we will not need to use any of what was in this biennium, we will not need to use any of what was in fund balance when we started the biennium. And I think that's a real positive. So it allows us to push out that line. However, if you all choose to accept or give us direction to come back with the higher strategic reserve, that will also change the line a little bit. And Councilmember Stewart raised this earlier, and I appreciate the point that there's a, it's a, it's a give and take depending on what council wants. And so we wanted to get direction from you all before bringing that, because it does definitely change. And then when we get to that point, we'll have also have a conversation about, in the long-term plan, about how we finance capital projects that need to come out of the general fund. Because we do have projects that don't have a funding source that are going to need to be addressed. I'll use the example of Fire Station 83, which is a pretty significant project that right now is not funded in our CIP. So when we get to that point, there's a number of decisions that council will will be making that all impact how we use what's in the the general fund fund balance moving forward and where that line stays or moves depending on your actions.
Okay, great. So I do support the mid-buy budget strategies that you have. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Scott, you'd be glad to know that my colleagues asked all my questions. So he, so that's that. And then I just wanted to say, to give the thumbs up to those three points on step number one, agree to the 4% expenditure reduction, agree on the revenue strategy and on the changing reserve level, too. Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thank you, council. And I do want to be clear on one more part. It was, you made this decision in the 2020, when we adopted the biennial budget, but it it does include it, it assumes the 1% in 2024 as part of that. I will share with you, and Deputy Director Christine, and he shared with me earlier today, that the 1% actually brings in less than it did last year, given the way our property tax is administered. But nonetheless, it does assume the 1% as part of that. So I just want to be clear about that as well.
All right, I am last. Yeah, thank you to our extremely large team for all of the work they have done. This looks great. And then this is coming back as an ordinance that we'll discuss and vote on on 8 November?
Yes. So it will come back as an ordinance. We will hold a public hearing on it. Your decision to vote or not that evening is up to you all. We can, you can take that vote on the 21st, and we'll still meet the the timeframe. We do have to vote on the property tax ordinance no later than the 21st as well. It has to go with it. Those two things always go hand in hand.
Okay.
So we'll be bringing those as part of the November 8th meeting, and then you can choose how fast or slow you want to take that, make that decision point.
Great. Yeah, so I'm good with these three. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Did you have anything else?
No, that's, that's all there is for tonight.
Awesome. All right. I mean, just for budget.
Yeah.
Correct. But let us take a seven-minute break, if that's okay, and come back right at 8:30. Cool. Next up, we do have our discussion on the informational report on hydrology study. I believe we have, oh, Audrey is already there. All right, hello.
Hello, good evening. This evening, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director, and we have prepared a presentation to summarize the conclusions of the hydrology study and the flow control regulation study. In advance of the presentation, just wanted to quickly thank both staff and the consulting team, Northwest Hydraulic Consultants and Alta Terra for their efforts throughout both of these studies. This evening, staff will be presenting our conclusions. Toby Canon, City's Senior Stormwater Engineer, will be presenting, and Stephanie Sullivan and I are available for questions. Stephanie is the City's Senior Stormwater Program Manager. Toby, whenever you are ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, and thank you, council. I'll start by acknowledging, you know, I'm really the tip of the iceberg on this. NHC and Alta Terra Consulting, Patty Dillon and Aaron Nelson have done the lion's share of the work on this, and they certainly deserve my appreciation. And with that, we'll jump into it.
Toby, really quickly, you, can you share maybe your other screen? It looks like we're seeing all your great notes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Looks great, thank you.
All right. No, I appreciate it. Well, thank you. Again, this effort arose a few years ago as the town center began to ramp up. With that activity, council expressed some concerns that, you know, development in the town center might impact the streams downhill of it. George Davis and Ebright Creek, they share the lion's, lion's share of the town center runoff. So these generated, obviously, the greatest level of concern. In response to this, council worked with staff and leadership at that time to include a couple items on their 2021 work plan. First was a hydrology study to evaluate the behavior of the Thompson and Inglewood basins. And then, second, we developed a study to review the adequacy of the city's flow control regulations. Council also established a placeholder just to accommodate any potential future work that might be suggested by these first two studies. So what brings us here today? With NHC and Alta Terra, we wrapped up our two studies, so we are at the finish line with these. This represents our fourth update for council, and we wanted to share the results of these and also touch on some potential direction in the future. What have we learned from this effort? First, this is really a good news story. The study concluded that our city stormwater standards do provide adequate stream protection. That's the main takeaway. And the second one is obviously that our current stormwater regs are adequate to support build-out within the town center. And as we look beyond the town center, we did uncover some opportunities for future work plan work. The core of this obviously is tied to, you know, our standards and regulations around stormwater. And it's worth a little bit of time to kind of go over how those regulations apply to our work in particular, and how they apply to, you know, generating detention facilities. So when we say flow control, you know, really, what do we mean? First, flow control for the purpose of this is detention. These are the ponds and vaults that we see around the community, and their primary goal, obviously, is to manage peak flow rates and then manage the high-flow durations that we encounter from runoff. The second item is that the flow control standards are spelled out in our King County Surface Water Design Manual that the city's adopted. This is a requirement of the NPDES permit. There's really, it's, it is the way it is, as they say. And then finally, implementing flow control facilities, building these things. This is triggered by impervious area, so it's typically prompted by a development proposal or a capital project by the city. As we get into detention standards, I want to talk a little bit about how we measure the performance of these things. First, the King County Surface Water Design Manual allows for a couple of software packages. And through using that tool, the manual also establishes three distinct levels of flow control. We, Thompson Basin and Inglewood Basins are both part of the Level 3 flow control, which is the most stringent. I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit, but the graph is intended to show the typical runoff response, really, for any area. Generally, it suggests that big storms are rare, smaller storms are more common. And the sweeping dark line describes how runoff behaves for any given event. You can see the storm events on the bottom, you know, the 1, 2, 5, 10-year, and then the rate obviously increases on the other axis. So the goal of detention is to try to release runoff from a property, much like the natural forest does. And that means trying to replicate that curve for a forested site. Over the years, this has been refined through a lot of research, a lot of PhDs have been minted on it, and we've identified, really, the area that's crucial to stream protection. That's identified in that shaded zone, and that corresponds, not surprisingly, to our Level 3 flow control. Excuse me. So if we keep, you know, maintain a consistent curve, you know, to that forest level, you know, as we follow that mid-tier curve, we will protect our streams. So the goal of this post-develop curve is to mimic our pre-developed conditions. So with that bit of background, we're going to jump into really some of the study elements here. The study did look at, as we noted, the Inglewood and Thompson Basins. Inglewood's about twice the size of Thompson. One of the interesting things we found is that ultimately, both of them, as they discharged into the lake, produced similar runoff levels. What we did was compile data on the soils, wetlands, topography, land use, pervious surface, basically anything that would influence runoff. And then NHC input this information into a kind of a complex basin-wide model. They use that to calculate runoff, really, at any juncture in the basin. This serves as our baseline data, and it provides a runoff levels for existing conditions and on a basin-wide, you know, look, if you will, you know, this is a condition that we're trying to replicate. So as part of these early stages of the product, our project, NHC also monitored four stream gauges within our study area. These measured actual stream flow levels. A, B, and D were installed as part of the basin planning project and basin, or rather, Gauge C is an existing one that's monitored by King County. One of the big steps we took was calibrating this model. The graph here presents a snapshot of, you know, the measured stream flow gauge data and also the simulated stream flow rate generated by the model. And what we see here is really close agreement between the predicted and actual runoff results. A huge amount of effort went into this calibration exercise, but the payoffs are equally huge in that we have a real high level of confidence in the quality of the model, as well as the quality of the results that it delivers. With that existing model kind of buttoned down, we shifted into developing a developed basin scenario model. For this case, we assumed full build-out conditions, and we started that using long-term growth projections developed by TCD, some of their prior work. The next step was defining actual detention facilities for the future development areas. NHC followed basically the same general process that an engineer would use to size a ponder vault for any development proposal. So they tackled it just the same way as any of the development proposals that we review. And with all this data, our developed conditions, it was rolled into this basin-wide model, and then that established our future runoff levels. So then we get into results. What happens when we compare NHC's model runs for both the existing and then the future build-out scenarios? If you look at this graph, it's really impossible to see, but there's actually two lines there. They're essentially coincident. So whether we're looking at today's modeling results or looking at the full build-out, the runoff levels really do not change perceptibly. That means that flow control is working. You know, that's a takeaway from this exercise. The graph that we're showing here is located near the mouth of Ebright Creek, but it's important to realize we did observe this pattern throughout the Thompson Basin and as well, much of the Inglewood Basin. Another key point here is that, you know, all the points we picked around the town center, they behave this way as well. So the takeaway from that is that flow control within the town center works. We did allude to some interesting results. These were detected down at the mouth of George Davis Creek. You know, and doing some digging, we concluded this was due to the outwashed soils there. This provides a significant amount of storage and infiltration in the region. And what we observed when we looked at the curves, you know, the the kind of baseline data that we want to mimic, the curves actually began, instead of sitting on top of each other, they tended to diverge. So there was some separation between them. And ultimately, that we concluded that this reservoir of outwashed soils soaked up a bunch of runoff and prevented it from, you know, quickly running off. And when we mixed in developed scenarios and things like that, it it really got complicated. It was difficult to predict how that happened. But the takeaway is that we do have, you know, room to explore, you know, what the repercussions of that are. I think another key takeaway in that is that this is unique to just a portion of the Inglewood Basin. And I think I'd also note that this area, while it's outside of the town center, it is worthy of considering further. But in reviewing it, we reached a conclusion that responding to this behavior isn't really urgent. It's, again, the takeaway is that that developed site condition represents full build-out, and that's a condition that really won't be reached for decades. So we could tackle this in a, you know, somewhat systematic or methodical approach. So that really wraps up the the formal presentation. Before we jump to questions, I do want, you know, ask you to remember a couple things. First, that we concluded that our current stormwater standards are adequate to protect the city's stream resources. And secondly, that these standards can accommodate the projected growth in the town center. And then looking downstream at George Davis, we do see an opportunity to consider some future work as well. Any changes to the city code or other requirements that we might decide to implement, these would ultimately occur through the normal NPDES permit renewal cycle. And then the final thing I'd want to note is that the retrofit program really, it's a great tool that would respond to the conditions that we discovered in the Inglewood Basin. We have projects identified in the retrofit strategy report, and there's a program in place to initiate. So administratively, really, the loose ends for this project, we're going to tie up our report, anticipate having that concluded by the end of November, and that can be made available to council. So with that, we'll open things up to questions and like, love to hear what you have to say.
Great, thank you, Toby. Councilmember Howell?
Hi, Toby. Thank you so much for this work and for presenting it so clearly. My question may be difficult to answer. It has to do with town center. At what point would our current certain, current standards not work? What would it need to be in terms of structure, impervious service, surfaces, people would make our current standards not work? Is there a limit? Or is this something where we wouldn't?
There is not a limit, yeah. No, I, thank you for that question, and this is something that we did discuss internally as well. You know, the the standards are implemented, you know, not on a, you know, percentage of basin, if you will, but really, they're a reflection of, you know, impervious area. So we projected full build-out within the town center as well as other areas. So the expectation is that, you know, so long as the underlying assumptions that are based on zoning don't change, we should be good. And I think one of the things that we did consider really is that, you know, for example, if if the town center were to upzone or get more dense, the reality is that, you know, some of these areas are projected to be 90% impervious already with just residual landscaping as, you know, more landscape features and that type of thing. So there's really no scenario contemplated short of just paving the entire town center that would prevent, that would generate results that don't work here.
Okay, I think that that's helpful to understand. So people don't create the impact that impervious surfaces do, then?
Correct, yeah. Rain on pavement, you know, rain on parking lots, rain on buildings.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to say, my screen is blank. Councilmember Trean?
Hey, Toby. Thank you for the work. It's been a long time coming. I've been waiting for this for, well, it seems like since I got on the council. So can you, can the model show the results of stormwater events that are 200 years, a 200-year event or a 500-year event?
It can. And again, the the sweet spot, if you will, you know, that slide that And again, the sweet spot, if you will, you know, that slide that showed the kind of the mid-cross section, they've concluded that those massive events, you know, those are stream course-changing, you know, in a forested condition, those ultimately, you know, the stream is going to change no matter what. But to answer the question, the model can identify those. And, you know, the line continues up. I think it's, you know, extends out to a 500-year event, if I remember correctly.
Did you guys run the model with a forested condition?
We did. And for the entire basin, you know, we looked at the, you know, it's a good baseline to get a sense of, you know, what happened before settlement. But realistically, on a basin-wide level, that isn't a condition that we can realistically replicate simply because of the, you know, the level of existing development within it. The best we can do is, you know, look at the maximum amount of development that does exist. And this is an interesting thing that we did notice. There's actually areas where due to development, the amount of runoff actually decreases. And the reason being is that we would be replacing areas with no flow control with areas that now have flow control. So we're actually diminishing, you know, the runoff. Each individual site, each individual development, each individual project, they have to come in and their target is forested conditions. But again, the ability to extrapolate that out to the, you know, 1,600 acres comprised of the Inglewood Basin, there's just no way to, you know, implement changes within the basin that could accommodate that. One thing we do, I would note is, you know, I mentioned it's about 1,600 acres. The development and redevelopment contemplated for all of Inglewood is less than 10% of that. So, you know, there's a huge pieces of area that are wetlands, steep slopes, you know, the type of neighborhood that just isn't, you know, suitable, if you will, for redevelopment. And the result is that the redevelopment effort, you know, that full build-out is going to be very concentrated in a relatively small area.
So, because I noticed on the spike in January, which we are pretty much seeing every year now, that we're seeing these 100-year events and moving the creeks. So how much on your, the reporting or the study was, did it address climate change?
We, you know, there's a, we did use data from the university in terms of expanding, you know, projected flow levels to accommodate. And I apologize for NHC not being here, but I can't recall, you know, how far out they looked in terms of adding, you know, the, you know, what projection level we went to. Was it 20 years, 50 years, whatever? But, yeah, through an institute at the University of Washington, there is readily accessible data that says this is what you should anticipate as you're looking at these things. And we did account for that in these assessments.
So if I understand you correctly, then the, the current flow controls at Level 3 would be adequate for the infrastructure on stormwater if we continue to keep the forested condition as one of the criterias and at least, at least 100 years. And if we were to, then my thinking would be if I were to take into account climate change going forward, unless for some miracle it stops, that we probably should have a 200-year criteria since that's what we're going to actually see. But, but that being said, we'll just jump back to that 100-year, that we have forested condition, 100-year flow, flow control three. Is that what you guys are telling us?
What we're looking at, and a little bit of expansion on what Level 3 is, from roughly half of what we consider the two-year event, we take that, you know, projected flow rate, cut it in half. Every anticipated flow rate from there up to the 50-year, not only do we have to match those peak rates, but we also have to match the duration or how often those, those events happen. So there's, that's kind of the second lens of the standard, and that's getting kind of real techie about the hydrology of it. And then above and beyond that, the Level 3 requires that we consider the 100-year event as well.
So are you cutting it in half above 50?
I'm sorry?
Do you cut it in half above the 50 to 100 then? Which is fine, I mean, I just don't know that.
What we've really found is that the vast majority, you look at these vaults, and 90% of the detention volume is to accommodate the, really up to about the 10-year event. Once you get above that, forested runoff levels start to jump, and they get, as a percentage of a developed runoff level, they get closer, if you will. It becomes a larger percentage of your developed runoff level. So as you get further and further up there, your 100-year, for example, you know, you're dealing with a much more significant percentage of the 100-year developed event. And again, to kind of circle back to your question, Councilmember Trean, the discussion about, given climate change, should we say 100 years should become 200-year? We do have climate change, to some extent, considered into the projections because we did rely on, you know, projected growth and rainfall events. Again, those are projections. We're looking at a basin-wide model. But, you know, the takeaway from this, and I want to be clear, this isn't a policy-setting report so much as this is scientific kind of research, if you will, to try to identify how does this thing behave and what steps we want to take in response to that understanding. So, you know, whether we jump from 100 to a 200, I'm certainly not prepared to answer that tonight, but, you know, that is the type of, you know, deep dive we could do in the future, if that was a direction of council. Certainly support considering that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I can just add on to, Toby, there are many, many conversations happening regarding climate change and stormwater at a regional and state level. So I would anticipate this would be in one of our updated newer permit cycles as well as manual cycles.
Thank you, Audrey. Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I'm just really glad that we, we did the, the study to collect the data so we know how, we know what's happening within at least two of our basins. And so I look forward to also, moving forward also on the Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin too, when that comes around. So, good job, thank you very much, and look forward to working with you, continue working with you on this. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Trean.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Hey, Toby. So when you're talking about climate change, are you talking about, like, is it winters being wetter and summers being hotter? Is that what we're talking about, just more rainfall in the winter?
Yeah, and, no, appreciate the question, Councilmember Lamb. The, you know, this study kind of had a fairly narrow scope in that, you know, our consideration was largely confined to detention and are the requirements for detention adequate? Or are we gonna, you know, are they inadequate? Are we going to blow up the streams because we're not making these big enough? You know, and that was kind of what we looked at. But through that lens, what we looked at was, you know, wetter winter, you know, additional rainfall, you know, and kind of looking at those documented projections. And I think, you know, to Audrey's point, there's going to be significant changes, I think, in the next 10 years with what's expected of local governments in terms of how we, how we accommodate that reality.
Great. Was there anything about this study that surprised you? I mean, it sounds like this study has been worked on for at least longer than I've been on council, so I'm just curious if there's any, did this confirm a lot of what you already thought about this area? Or it was, were there anything like new surprises?
I appreciate that. I'm never surprised anymore. No, but first I want to acknowledge that I think Councilmember Trean and Councilmember Stewart were probably the, the last holdovers from when this effort kicked off. So credit for sticking through it all and, you know, hearing these presentations. But I think probably the biggest surprise was this curious behavior, this large outwash reservoir, and how it tended to, you know, sop up water in the beginning of winter and then, you know, continue to let it weep out at the bottom of George Davis, you know, well into spring and even well into summer. You know, the, as I mentioned, one basin's twice the size of the other, but the flow rates are essentially the same, which, you know, there's no other real differences except this, this geology. But, you know, that was kind of a neat thing we discovered.
Cool, it's great to have this data as we move forward. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else? Awesome. Thank you, Toby, and Audrey, and Stephanie. This is really interesting. I don't, I know we did something like a year and a half ago, I think. I can't remember the last time I saw something like this, so. And you said you, this is coming back at some point, at the end of November, this study should be done?
The, go ahead, Audrey.
I was gonna say, the study, we're finalizing our report with the consultant team, and that is expected to be done in the next probably eight weeks or so, six to eight weeks, and then that can be available for council and anyone that wants to review it.
Awesome, yeah. Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. All right, next up we have public comment. I think we'll just move straight to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. Attendees, joining by the phone, by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. It looks like we do have one person available, ready for public comment. And I will unmute the callers as, in the order they raise their hands. You'll have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live for the record.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. Been in Sammamish since 2000, when the city first incorporated. I've been watching very actively stormwater since 2015 forward. I've also been reading a lot of code and have been able to get some updates to help the city. And it's really glad to see that, obviously, King County Stormwater Design Manual does a really good job on flow control. I guess the easiest way to think about it is the plateau used to be treed, and there was the San Francisco and Seattle fires, so it's been detreed twice. So we're not running on a forested condition presently. There are farms, lands, lots of places been cleared. So every time that you're following the stormwater rules, you're going back to the pre-forested. So you're going to see, even with existing code, just as is that everybody uses, update King County manual, you're going to see stronger stormwater controls than what currently exists. And I wanted to talk about what Toby had said. There is a great outwash soils in George Davis Creek. That's actually in the 2005, 2008, 2011 Inglewood Sub Basin Plan, but that cost about $400,000 to do, and it was done by Parametrics. Those soils do sop up water and they take it. And what I have noticed is where the roundabout is on northeast Inglewood Hill Road at 216th, there used to be water in 2014, 2015 on the uphill side or the east side of that. And since about 2015, I haven't seen any water there because it always goes in. And when East Side Catholic was built with the stormwater detention that was put in and the Mars Hill Church, which is now the central Washington site, down gradient flooding that used to happen in the George Davis Creek area and the Inglewood Sub Basin no longer happens because there is detention for it, so you don't see it as much. And similarly with Thompson Sub Basin, although I think it's easier for me to watch George Davis, and currently Barrington, which I believe completed in 2012, it's 45 homes. As one of the biggest stormwater ponds I've ever seen for detention, and it's also retention, and it relieves water coming down the hill on northeast Sixth Street, right by where Tamara kind of is, and the city purchased the 14-acre Yates parcel. So you can watch it, and you can see there's actually less water than there used to be before. The stormwater standards are working. You're going to see it be better and better, and they have all the parameters and everything for the rainfall, the increased rainfall. You can even have a 100-year storm back-to-back that happens. One of the things that isn't done is if you have three days of one inch of rain or more, it's statistically significant for landslides. So I recently sent you the landslide maps in the Zaku Sub Basin, showing where landslides have actually occurred. And when that happens, about once or twice every year. So we need to really, really make sure that we do the critical areas ordinance, that we don't put development there because we'll end up with sliding problems that will wreck our houses, people, roads, and safety. So that's it for tonight. Thanks for the study. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to give comment, please raise your hand. Looks like that's all for this evening. Back to you, Mayor Clark.
Awesome, thank you. Scott, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. I want to thank the council for joining at the Eastlake-Sammamish Trail Grand Opening for the trail completion. It was a long process, and it was great to see the community out with all of council to celebrate that major event. And the trail is now open, so that's a really fantastic community asset to really connect in the broader community at large. There were some great photos taken by Ryan that are on the Facebook page. They're, they're really nice, so I appreciate everyone joining us and being out there to support the, the finish of that project. Want to remind council and the public that we have a joint council and commit-all commissions meeting on October 21st here at City Hall to talk about the comp plan process and to really dig into the separate chapters of the comp plan. So all of our commissions are invited to join us. It's going to be most of the day Saturday, but I think it'll be a good event. And if folks want to learn more about the comp plan process, feel free to drop in for that one. I also want to share out that it's a little bit of unfortunate timing, but the same day is the Izakua Food Bank's mayor's day of concern, and they will be out at local grocery stores taking donations. The store in Sammamish will be at the QFC in Clohoney. Unfortunately, we have an event going same day, same time, but hopefully folks can get out there and help support the Izakua Food Bank by donating at the QFC in Clohoney. So just want to let the community know about that. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a report? Yeah, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to let you know, we had our first finance committee meeting for East Fire and Rescue. The net is zero, but similar to our budget, there are, there were, or there are revenue projections that will come in higher than anticipated. Unfortunately, the CPI estimate in our budget was 4%, but the actual is 4.5%. So all of the excess bud, revenues will be taken up, for the most part, by salary and benefit increases due to the higher CPI. So the good news is, it's net zero for us. If anybody wants any more detail, I'm happy to share. But the recommendation going forward is that we take that excess revenue and we just carry it over to cover those additional expenses. And we are also having Thursday, the, we've all been invited to the elected officials' K4C meeting, if anyone can make that. So that'll be put on by King County.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I have a Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow for, there'll be three major topics. The first one is the Sound City Association Legislative Priorities. We'll be discussing that. Also, the King County Cultural Access Sales Tax. King County Council is considering a proposal to implement a councilmatic 1/10 of 1% sales tax to support cultural access. That would grant cultural organizations with funding for free admissions, access to... That would grant cultural organizations with funding for free admissions, access to, more access to underserved communities and transportation costs, internships, et cetera. We will also be having a discussion on a ballot measure, which I think is actually really interesting. It's the 2024 Climate Funding Levy. King County Council is considering a request to generate a billion dollars in funding to address climate, the climate change. The reason being is that right now, King County is not expected to meet their climate goals. And a major reason is that cities just don't have the lack of, have lack of funds to support some of the programs to address climate. And hopefully by raising additional funds, cities will be able to have the dollars to implement some of these programs to support climate. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Thanks, this is just a heads up, Amy, that I'll be trying to attend the PIC meeting because I actually want to bring up a budget shortfall that the Flood Control Management District has, which is significant. It relates, it ties right back into the Climate Action Committee stuff that you just spoke about, really. We have a huge shortfall that the levy does not currently accommodate. And that is to shore up different projects that are not in Semamish. They're south, they're in our region, you know, trying to reduce the flooding in agricultural lands and in cities like around the Taquilla area, for example. So I just, it's going to be difficult because people don't want to talk about it because it means maybe raising more money than what we're on this levy that many people don't want to do because they don't want to go back to taxpayers with any kind of increase. But we do have a budget shortfall that's significant. We can't finish projects that actually impact people's lives. So that's just going to be something I'll bring up tomorrow night.
All right, anybody else?
I forgot, I forgot to mention, I was voted the chair of the FAC for EFR, so.
Congrats, yeah.
Congratulations.
More spreadsheets and numbers, I couldn't be happier.
Yeah, my nightmare. All righty. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks everybody, good night.